Everything going right?
Everything going well, man? Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Are we going to? I want I can tell others. Well, we should go this week. Well, are you glad next week? Very. PJ, let me ask, have I not sure he's gone? Did Larry ask you already what Virginia is? Or just same to an opinion? Minutes recorded now? And how about stripping to? Or how we distribute it? I mean, we have to keep it, obviously. Do you have any on that? I mean, I think the board has to say something. I don't know.
You have to say something. You absolutely do. What I would stream on, it doesn't need either. I can't do just like did in Lynn County with our F O Y. Once.
Right, and then we have to put it out, right?
No, I mean, I can choose to.
So. Open once a week today or tomorrow?
Today.
I don't think it's that hard. I mean, basically, what I think the board wants to do is just when we open the meeting at ten, close it whenever, that's what goes on here.
That's not like, see, that's the issue.
But I don't want that. Why don't we have people send little to an hour of that? To get to their meeting? It seems silly.
One thing we did talk about is possibly moving. So the same bunch of starts at nine forty-five.
Okay. Well, that, yeah, you probably don't want to send her either. That would be fine, so that's why I don't want.
That's a better suggestion, a better solution than starting at nine and just sitting here.
For one hour and then have it like, I think the journal had something on there. I mean, after about fifteen minutes, I got carried away.
It started at nine forty-five.
I think it was like nothing.
Then you go on.
And it's silly to have an hour of. It would, well.
There's no reason why you can't.
That's hilarious, so we know what to do.
So, yeah, those were, I said, those were four years, but that'd be a suggestion.
Yeah, I heard that suggestion, but I noticed this weekend didn't happen, so. That's above my pay grade, I guess. So whenever you're.
Whenever you are.
Um, I have a meeting at one.
Oh, right after this meeting before the eleven thirty.
Right after that one?
Yeah, alright.
Oh, dear.
Here's what she did, we must have been. I think George and Jackie.
Jordan. They're rambling. Now we have a waiting office, excited with this. We go to that reserve.
Yeah, Justin.
I just walked out.
Yeah, just say that I closed down the preserve for all of them because they're happy.
So how does that? That reserve will pay nineteen dollars an hour. And they think this is the biggest one he's saved that they've ever done.
I have this solution.
It's over here.
Oh, maybe.
Jeans, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm fine, alright.
You actually prefer jeans?
That's how I can tell people I should know who I am.
I just call in troublemaker.
Yeah, so does my wife.
Troublemaker, for sure. Oh, yippee doo.
I have a great question, I'm sure enough to clean spirits to nine forty-five. Start a meeting at nine forty-five, do you think? So that'd be great. And we can watch it.
What's that mean?
He said go ahead from nine to ten because the meeting officially starts at nine o'clock. And then you go back to nine forty-five.
Then they include cameras?
I saw it.
Who's had idea with that?
That's what PJ would just suggest.
And she would be coming apart and don't understand.
I've never been with a boss who's so scared to a city that I thought it could be a year.
And that's not a board.
No, it's a small group. Well, there's no knockout yet. Brett has drew a dead on point so far.
What, do what?
Have you read Brett's blog recently?
No knockout on what?
Um, between the sheriff and the board.
Oh.
He asked, he asked the sheriff to head on point. But there's no knockout yet. I just wish he would quit. So what do you think of moving claims period to nine forty-five? So if you just need to do claims for fifteen minutes, I would like that.
I don't care what you do, I care about that.
Well, what do you want to do?
I changed it.
Apparently, you folks don't like it after being a minute's being recorded.
Wasn't bothering me, man.
That's a noise, a fair amount of it.
It's, it's not worth being recorded. I don't have a problem with anything being recorded because it's by law. Everything has to be recorded. The meeting doesn't, well, no minutes have to be taken. Right, and we update our comment and don't have to have meetings on the internet. I wish that was a given, but, you know, there, I don't want to, like, our department had meetings, quite honestly. You know, there are people talking. I don't know, I don't know what the board thinks. I don't think we have to put those on our website or the nine to ten. I like, when the meeting opens, you want to close this, that's when it goes on. Ten o'clock when he calls the meeting.
Larry.
Well, okay, then maybe I used the wrong term. When he calls the meeting at ten o'clock, that's when I'd like it to start on our website for meeting.
That's always been very.
Okay, well, this, I, I'm not using the wrong terminology. I, what I want on our, no, but I'm not, I must not be clear. What I want on the website starts at ten o'clock, whatever you want to call it, ends when we adjourn our meeting.
And we can come to.
I mean, it shouldn't be a big deal.
This is what Larry and I have listened to years since when we needed. Because the janitors were reading every week, open through nine, when we do this. That's why I asked you. I would never have gotten here because I said the meeting didn't start until ten o'clock. We can't, the accounting term, I told you, the meeting starts at nine. It's not even a long meeting. And this is the recorder. And I can shoot this recording. I can do it five times or five years through.
I see you gave me different.
No, you can tell, you can take data, I was, in the, in the seminar, I cannot tell. That's what we just said.
Really? That's not what I heard him say.
What did you hear him say?
I thought he said that it's up to the board. How would you want to have?
The seminar.
Record? But that's not how I thought I heard him say that.
No, he did say that. No, he did not say that.
He did say that.
Well, you can't, the recording. Why mention? I heard that, and that's why I asked her. And he was told to be poor. I can record the meeting, he means that one too. Code sessions, it's the, it's the meeting, record the proceedings. It doesn't say how. I can potentially do that. To record the proceedings.
One, one thing leads to another, you know? It was funny, so we.
And that's what I was having, George said that, and we were going to ship you recording.
Well, what, to me would be easier is if you just had a different S D card or something from nine to ten. Like, you do the closed sessions, you keep those, if people want to access something, access them.
If we would sit down and talk together, I'd agree with you.
I, unless I could pull into another meeting, possibly, I can put, you know? But if I go, let's just, don't you think we should burn down too? I mean, we should write this down, like, use them as, so that we all should get it. That's what I, okay. Alright, I, I think we're fine. We just need to do what I, what I said. And we all get along well.
If you guys, if we would talk.
Alright, I'll do.
What else we got? That's all the concern.
Well, because we're gonna, on the website sense, it's gonna go live. So again, I mean this. So nobody's gonna go on our website.
That's already out, I mean, the journal makes.
That's fine, I'm talking about other than just the journal. I'm talking about our citizens and just as time goes on. You know, I mean, I just want that.
In, in good news, you bought Washington, too. I saw one over a hundred views.
You saw what?
One of the books had over a hundred views.
Yeah. It's supposed to.
Exactly.
One had two hundred and eighty-seven.
Oh, really?
But the same person watched it two hundred times.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I think JD's back.
He just asked for the last three. Currently, now, this, the night, yeah, the way the plans are. He says that they're not. Says that you were supposed to approve your claim, it's just supposed to have a shortage.
Sorry, we'll wait till when he gets his.
Alright, we'll wait till. Hey, you. Are you? No, I'm not. Come from you?
I'm fine, no. I was so mad, I'm like, I don't know what happened. Didn't add, my daughter Megan bought any gift card, hundred dollar gift card on that day. And so we got an email, and then a, who players was to get an email with PIN number and a security code or something. Well, the second email number came, so I, you know, didn't decide to take care of it. So I called the number on the email, get somebody right away, I'm so excited. Well, then they say, sorry, we're not the right person. That guy gave me another number, got that person right away. That person said, sorry, we're not the right number, gave me another number. Got that person right away, and then she says, well, this isn't the right number, I'll transfer you. So transferred me out, so I'm home for fifty minutes. And the gal says, well, you pushed the wrong button. So he thought I was a little short with you. I said, oh, I said, no, no, and she's gonna hang, they're so. Like, and that, this is a hundred and fifteen minutes. You didn't do that, you were sorry. And I mean, she was so rude as they, and I said, you know what? I said, we're gonna dispute this on the credit card, fly Southwest, I said, we're done. And I called Megan, I said, sorry, you're disputed, and just say, you know, we weren't able to redo it. It's, you know, I'm proud of it. I couldn't, I mean, it didn't, she was like, you did one thing wrong. I said, I know, and then don't hang up on me, you know? I'm just like begging her, please, fifty minutes. You know, I put it on speakerphone, and I'm like, trying to work around it. You pushed the wrong button. I was not happy.
No, I had somebody called that wanted to run this through.
Who was it? Kill him? I didn't, I couldn't figure it out. I don't know, I'll have to wait a few years to run against, probably.
You know, I don't think that's a fault. They said they would.
Said what?
They would run. Then I can, George, I can run a crowd.
I haven't heard that. I haven't.
Even agree to a stadium.
Well, it saves a lot of money per year. But that's no question, it's a good deal, but maybe it's getting to life, I just hope.
How's up? Long memory.
I may just want to go get a grab one anyway.
So you're going to Ireland?
Well, I'm gonna go on a tour, Ireland is one of the status.
Really?
Yep, we'll be gone for sixteen nights. Just booked it last.
This must be the, ring glitter.
I'm sorry, I'm not.
It's gonna go, Scotland, Ireland, and Harburg. And kayak in the fjords. But I'm here sleeping, so I might be ringing, it's gonna be really warm, so.
I'd like to go to Norway, so my mother's from there. I don't know, really?
All the B S. See, my relatives are from Norway, too.
Is that right? Ireland, Texas.
Well, you know, it's just, you just have to be.
Every top is, uh.
You just, you just have to be important. There's a few days in London.
But how many, how many states? Your statue.
Um, there's. No, it's still. No, it's, it's cold. Cold. Oh, that's not how you spell it, that's how you say it.
I think that's the same. Might be a seven.
It is.
Cool, crazy. I wonder if that's for the one on the Titanic.
The Titanic left, well, they have a big Titanic tour where it started, I believe.
Really? Because I got it, I remember I said it before.
No fire?
Nothing, I think this is.
It was such, it was very supportive. I guess.
We're watching the movies.
And the last study.
Sounds like a real time.
Coming, her cousin is in traveling, so it's sort of the last minute, fill up the ship. If they have a balcony, it'll be nice for me. Or a house, or a good pod, another one.
It's been heard from some east side.
There was a guy, okay, um, he's working the wood, he's, no, he's, I see. My district, small factory. This guy was incredibly, he was trying to have a, see him. And so I called him, and he said, he, he lives in Portland. So I talked to him, he's very interested in how I was doing with this guy, but then he ended up with a kind of. I said, I haven't been in the, I understand what it's to. In Canada, he grew up in this town, they, they still live there.
Oh, really?
And he's talking about what occurred. But the salt factory, I believe, too. He was the pilot. And it was very interesting, when he, in, this was, Spencer, I had a, you know, scratch, it's coming, you know, there. Two men, Germans were retreating, they were, they were, seeing that, it was straight, it was straight. And then, I was in the kitchen. I was very, I was, I was, I was in the kitchen, I was in the scanner, it was in his hands, because it was. We saw, especially these big sides. Some of the other, you know, you just say, uh, you just have a red, you know, top guy. That is, that is, yeah. He gets suspended because he made the wedding, rather than going to the wedding. He's difficult, so I'm like, that's, that's, well, he's, he's. Very young guy, he's, he's. But then he got promoted, it was very interesting. But place that he was from, he was correspondent, he was an organist. Places, things. I'm trying to, can you see them? We can see that.
I have to go up in, like, I'm sure I'll have everything to be able to sort of, ever go anywhere. Even so. Well, you know what that means? Dragging my van, my lawyer. I said, well, there goes the, the trip. I said, well, there goes, aren't by the way. Yeah, it's just transportation. I've gone for a hundred and fifty thousand.
Where am I, three hundred and fifty?
Thirty-four thousand. You know, I kind of like to, because I'm throwing my kayak sometimes. I'm throwing my bicycle for a bit. I think you have, well, believe me, I've thought of, just to jump a hook and up by. You're like, I think it's pretty dark and easy. Now, I'm not gonna buy another one, but. It is amazing how much we use it, going back and forth, we're all watching it fall and stuff, and it's just. But I don't wear a jersey. I really can't even play this, it's a good vehicle through the air, so I've been driving the ant, it's ninety-five. Pretty good. I think it was still good, I think I could put the kayak on top, it's probably single, so. Even our fear of, I'm afraid of something that I might.
Oh, my. And how is my brother, Bill Bowles?
Is it almost done?
New, it's just getting out of the ocean. But it's very, very good to be able to.
I think I'm gonna push it, is there a limit?
Oh.
After a while, you just say, oh, my. I don't think it's true, though, it's what I got, right?
I don't know, I don't.
I blew it on that.
Um. Yeah, but I was trying to figure out what you really were saying, and then we started. Can I take a meeting, hold it in? I mean, I, I just want to re-dirt it out.
Um, I think we need to refill the, she's, she's, but, you know, billion, I did, there was price on the table for that clock here. And it's a big price, it would be less, honestly, be able to purchase them.
That's not what you want, is it?
I'd be happy. I needed four doors, is what I needed, because I carried passengers. Um, I didn't get a crew cab pickup, because when I looked at Explorer, and, you know, you can set up a price online. When I set up a price without.
Oh, yeah, you can, yes, I'm gonna have to. Oh, yeah, you can, yes, I'm gonna have to.
Right. Now, there's covered discounts, and I can take them down. But when I priced the Explorer versus a crew cab pickup, the crew cab was more expensive. So I bid, I tried to fill this issue in. Thing is, sizes of change classes have changed. I, I saw a terrain parking lot.
Do you recommend, or are you glad I'm okay with that? I mean.
But it isn't fair to, um, bear. They used to be the only one that did hang up, but still.
Oh, I can't wait for that one call.
But, but the thing is, I would have, he did, he would have just gone with that one, because that wouldn't be fair to the other. There is the one that I actually met spec, if you went line by line through the spec, the Explorers, the Van Colgrabi, which was still. It's wheelbase, um, the other. Yeah. Um, my concern with the, I, I talked to a couple county engineers. When I was in Ames Tuesday, last Tuesday. Who looked at the Chevrolet Escape, a smaller size, actually.
Yeah.
They don't like, they're gonna make a hundred thousand miles.
Oh.
They said, uh, you know, they, they run on gravel, and, you know, they're more, I mean, they're good traction in the winter. But they're lighter duty.
Yep.
And, you know.
Well, you need something that's good.
I, I drive a good number of miles on gravel. A lot of times on ground, looking at it, because I've had a complaint.
On the ground?
So, and, uh, you know, they, the Warren County engineers, one who I talked to.
You mean, I guess you, do I get that?
Yeah, you know, and he said, it sounds spinning, I should hang out. Point that, say, clunk when you put it in gear.
Right.
And, uh, he said, it feels like too fragile part. He doesn't think that a lot. Says I'm probably getting a, it's off between sixty and seventy thousand miles instead of going, cause he should. He should go for a hundred thousand, because that's all, drive training and. Warren piece are boring now. I usually go with Warren piece plus twenty percent. Uh, with a hundred thousand mile.
My old land is a hundred twenty thousand miles, and I'm trying to say, no, I'm gonna get a, yeah.
Yeah.
Every year I spend my. Oh, okay, I've got some skills on driving now, or. But it's getting to the point where I don't want to take it out of town anymore. I mean, it drives alright, but.
You guys, well, that trail base was when you bring vehicles into the last step, the rear wheel drive vehicle within that class. I mean, even the Explorer now is front wheel drive, so they always say. But I think if that must be.
How are you?
Why are you?
You're in our eight.
So we had a deal, you know, that.
Huh?
We had a deal, we know.
Not like.
Thank you.
No. Sure. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, you know what? Yeah, yeah, on the curb there in the little house. No, we haven't, we haven't heard from her since that last test though.
She was, uh, kind of. She was working, maybe with her.
Might just be able to. No, she hasn't bothered at Tom's, we just renovated the road past her house here in the little house. Now, her feet, I, I thought, sure, we would be good, like, uh, because aren't those bumps on the bridges where they build out? Try and nail those out, so we can come in flat first, yeah. I never heard anything about that. I drove by her house.
Have you ever seen her?
I have never seen her, no. I, I bet her chewed me out on the home, but. No, I've got a team, it's a guy who does me. That's not, I'm still.
Mark, we're almost there, the driver's.
Great. The guys are really looking forward to that coming in place.
I wish we could do, you know, like a disc. Punch him in.
Okay. No, yeah, I got it. I'll remember that. Thanks.
They're still gonna have to select a shift or something.
But, I mean, that's still, uh, that's just a mouse play.
Yeah.
It, it's the typing and not really getting bored, those guys all face.
Right.
I don't know how to work it, it's great.
You didn't see it?
I did see it, yeah, she hooked it on with her computer and scanned on driver's license.
Were you guys aware what, uh, he was working on for our guys who were having to clock in? Um, driver's license scanners. Where they can just take their CDL and, and, uh, put it in front of the scanner, and then they don't have to type their login.
No.
That's been a problem for us at, uh, at Mobile. We have eleven people working out of there right now. And they have five minutes to punch in. And, uh, you know, our guys are not touch typists.
We'll drive it for the jail. Because we have, they work for eight, ten.
Well, we.
Now, Jess is a swipe thing?
It will be. All they have to do is scan their driver's license. And I was glad that, uh, Gene and Pat were able to set it up from a driver's license perspective. Because if they had a county ID card.
Right.
I could find a drawer full of cards someday.
That's such a.
That, that's the fear, where they will not leave their driver's license in a drawer or something.
That's such a, yeah. They brought you so here.
Yeah. But, uh, this is one that, that the Attorney's Office stayed after. It'll make life much easier for the guys.
Yeah, she's gonna try to.
Or at least you only have to sign one, you can go on.
Yeah, I think they're all playing, they're kind of playing.
Are you selling the?
Well, we got period thirteen. So, who says?
No, right, Karen.
Collaborate. I just tell you all.
Um, the pickups were fine. Um, those were really great bits on the pickups.
That's a.
But you're a potster.
Linda, Linda conservative Thursday, that kind of cost me a day of anyone going through the specs, so.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't get finished with the, with the low bids.
Thank you.
And the other bids until last, yesterday afternoon. I had to run out of post bridge then, too. Our County Bridge X nine, which is one that's on our replacement program for this year. Um. It was an old greenspan structure, which are the wood, wooden structures.
Yeah.
Or greenwood structure. And, uh, they had put a mudsill over the top, because the piling were failing on the green. Greenwood structure.
Yeah.
It couldn't carry loads anymore. So they spanned beyond it with beams, and they set them on other, what's called a mudsill.
There's one in there that needs.
Is there something buried in it?
Yeah, there's three, but then I just worked on that. Uh, and there's, there's one that just has my signature on it, which is up there. Oh, I'm just, I don't know how many are in there though.
But basically, a mudsill is just sitting on the dirt. And, uh, some of that dirt, you rode it. Um, the bridge settles, and now it's sitting on top. Of the old greenwood structure. Can you show your picture? No big deal.
Okay. Any signatures here?
Here's the gap between the greenwood structure and. Well, this is like. So that no way gets there in the whole structure, I mean. That's the south side. And maybe that's. This is the north side, you can see that the beams are resting right on them. It's left four inches on that wall.
And that's just from all right?
Um, this is the hole that's underneath the, uh, beams. And what they call a mudsill. So this is beams up here, greenwood structure sits over here. There's nothing supporting this corner of those beams. And, you know, basically, the whole thing just did this. You got a nine or nine sitting on the greenwood structure. Let me show you the piling that it's sitting on. You can see a picture of my finger, because I, I was hanging up the bridge rail. That pile slid through the middle. Well, we actually have this project out for consult design.
Yeah.
Uh, the plans are done, we just gotta accelerate the letting now. Problem is, it's gonna be closed until the contract moves in now, instead of being, being used. Uh, it should be done by February fifteenth, that'll be the completion we set on. But we could be closed a couple of months before the thirty four. We closed the bridge on two hundred eighty street, he's got tape. Um, it was a mudsill on top of an old greenwood structure, and it failed. The, the one corner was undermined, and now it's. No. That's not to say that somebody could cause that pump to happen. Somebody had to feel it.
Wouldn't that be a.
Yeah. Tom got a call that something was wrong with our bridge. So Tom relayed the call to me, and I ran out and looked at it, and he was right, something was indeed wrong with our bridge.
Something going on?
James.
I was gonna say. Sorry. I was gonna say.
That's not even a spec.
I don't know, some guy's always service, he says, you guys are providing the best entertainment I've had in years. What do you want?
Preferred CD. Excellent. They're doing better, it works. I wasn't gonna ask that.
What's up? You need both your R, your blades, right?
Camera, all about now.
You're used to.
Yeah, it's, the noise has a technical.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
There is no support on the captain's tongue. I'll take a look.
I'm going for it.
Yeah, I'm gonna start getting a nice way to set up first.
That's a double edged sword. It used to be, I was very happy to be.
Yo.
Now, we. Say. We, I have a question. Something I have to ask you.
Yes.
Pardon?
Isaiah.
We all.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. Well, must be a big story. That number. How, how's it going?
You going to stir code?
To who?
Stir code?
I'm going stir pretty deep?
No.
I haven't received an invitation. I don't know anything about. No, I'm, I don't know anything about it.
You better look it up. They're coming there September.
They are. Who are they?
Chicago.
Oh.
The land Chicago. I thought you knew all this stuff.
I, I haven't paid a lot of attention lately. So they're coming, they're coming just down the road, huh? That's probably as close as they'll be here. Well, then I may have to take the road trip. Haven't seen them for years. But they're good, just, you know, they're gonna be together.
Asshole.
Yeah, they toured together a couple of years ago. That, that was a pretty, pretty big tour, too. About two, four years ago. Well, now I'm gonna have to check it all out, make sure it's not nice. You know, maybe it'll be another anniversary for going.
There you go.
Well, that's good. Plus, plus the facts, you know, like, the Horns, they have replacements occasionally going for them, so there's. It's a little more rarer now, when there are all the originals are still together.
Hey, James.
Yeah.
That audit language, uh, with the paper, that audit language, uh, is.
Very confusing. That's, that's what I think. And it's, it's, it's amazing that you're the name auditor now, actually, as we done there. Before, getting that out. I can't. I just can't hear. Yeah, I know, that's why I was the one that's. The question is, good, but. I don't think you'll have to pass, we're gonna do it now legally, but then you actually deal with it. I don't think you.
That's what I'm saying. I was gonna say. I mean, there's two decisions in there. Something you have to say. Because.
It wasn't these bad, I can't remember who I did that to.
Actually, I thought, I think about that. If you had someone that thinks.
So I'm kinda sure there's something.
Might actually cost a lot more. Unless it's.
Not that far away.
So there's a building to say.
They already think that now, but, but this can't, you know, but the.
It's only about two minutes tomorrow.
It's, it's pretty sure.
Yeah.
So.
He has.
It's like, what I saw, it was like, that's not that. Who's this? Five of them said.
I mean, if, if that person actually does the job, like, finds it, or finds ways that could improve the overall budget, or. Might, I think, it would be worth it.
And it's, and that's.
I'll probably have to sit down after five.
No, it's not something that... No, less than sixty. I want to be there sixty years. That's my first year.
Major Wick is on vacation.
He had, I had two attachments with that. But I'm saying two attachments, Major Wick sent, had two attachments to it. And the one didn't open and he had to go to the other one. Correct. All of this is the questions that were sent to the chair. No, my daughter, uh, she...
Do you have a reunion? You see, I will do the spa makeover.
Were you the first number? Cause I had bought a bunch of those tickets. So I think probably I really wanted to...
Well, the people, the people I was said to it, I love. I told Gretchen Gabbett, she was sitting with me and I said, this is like, I'm gonna watch. This will be what I want. And I don't know, I took directions. I told her, hey, so everyone that I tell lies down here. Gretchen, like, once we do something, I'll, I'll hock myself and do some of that. Put a picture of my holding the bag. One of my, one of my friends took a lot of the photos from the weekend and put it in the music. And I put it on, two of them, go on my Facebook page and look at the, you'll have to scroll down a little bit now. But look up the two music videos. It's a lot of pictures going around there. You know, that'll just pop up in your, in your page if you like. Yeah, they're there too. Scott Swanson put it together. I don't know if you're remembering from the big Scott Swanson. There was a short Scott Swanson and a tall one. I was friends with the tall.
I was happy to know, Michelle Mulligan.
Yeah.
She came back.
She, yeah, she, I went to, uh, Grace School, junior high at Grace School.
She's in Texas.
No, I was asked kind of to help out. Yeah, he's over there.
Okay, let's call the meeting. Or first item of business is if you turn off your cell phones or turn on the vibrator. Next item is minutes.
Move on to minutes, John.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
I'd like to make a motion to make number eight, action item.
Right.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
What are we voting on?
I don't think we can do it, but...
What are we voting on? I thought we voted on minutes.
We did, and then I made motion to make number eight and action item.
And I would vote no on that if that's the, if that's the motion.
I said I voted aye, just soon be done with it.
Well, it can't be done with. We have Waging Hour, uh, conference, eleven, eleven thirty.
And that's gonna impact that decision?
Yes.
We don't know.
Can we do that?
Yes, uh, there's a conflict between Robert's rules and orders. You might wanna get a kind of attorney as far as, uh, making an action item agenda. Because there are provisions that you can make an action item. I'm not in the attorney and I don't play the team, so.
You don't, or is provision hard?
No, it has to do with timing and there are other provisions, but I don't agree with him.
Can we get a legal opinion before that?
That's what I want, the attorney's on the occasion.
Can we ask PJ? Call up and see if we can get one, or is that too late?
Go ahead and call PJ. Uh, let's move very long back to that item.
Uh, Mr. Jerry. Could you let them speak a little louder or speak into the mic because we can't hear back here. I, I can hear what Pat said.
Uh, Pat doesn't have a mic.
I don't have a mic, but they, I'm just telling you that you made a motion and that's been included. The motion has passed at this point. That's your call, okay?
Although that doesn't matter.
That does. It tells you cannot do that.
Then you change it down?
You have to. Item number nine is removed from the agenda. Uh, Mr. Lloyd was not ready to make his presentation. JD, you got your memorandum?
Move on the memorandum. First will transact.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote? Motion carries. I'll pass around the memorandum first.
Move to approve the retiree's request to stay in the county's...
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Ed is here this morning, being a consultant that worked with us on our health insurance. There's a lot of changes coming, uh, with the Obamacare or CAFPA as they call it. And there may be changes coming with our, uh, third party administrator with changes into new requirements. All computerization, everything has to happen. He's the expert, so I'm gonna let him speak so I can learn too.
Thank you. How are you guys today? But, uh, wanted to just touch briefly a couple of things that have happened that are, have been in the news and that everybody's aware of. Of course, First Administrators has decided that they're going to, uh, stop doing business here. I think a lot of it, I guess the Wellmark line would be that, uh, it's the regulations and the need for an upgrade in, in systems. Uh, the increased regulations made it hard for a lot of smaller carriers to stay in business. You can, you've seen that, maybe not so much in the news here, but you certainly see it nationally. A lot of small carriers have been purchased by larger carriers. It's just part of the nature of the business with the extra regulation and the extra requirements and everything that are in the law. Uh, there was also a need for them to upgrade computer systems to be able to handle what they call ICD ten coding, which is pretty complicated. So that's, that's the technical side of it. What it means to, to us, I think, is this, Um, Wellmark has agreed to take everything that we have there, move it over to their system and to honor the pricing that we have in place, uh, which I think is, uh, very, very good. I know when we've gone out to bid in the past, we've always found that the pricing was exceptional. Uh, so they've honored, they're gonna honor the pricing. I think you'll find that there are some network advantages with Wellmark as far as discounting. Uh, discounts were very close. That was one of the reasons we'd always been with Select First. I think you'll find some of the provider pricing to be a little bit better with Wellmark. I'm not gonna make a solid recommendation yet, but it certainly looks, at this point, that that's probably in the county's best interest to, to move with them, uh, at the time when they, when they do that. Um, as far as the health of the plan, we're at two point six million, just short of two point six million in reserves. We've reduced the funding, again, for July first, so we're, we're doing things backwards of what everybody else is. Most people run into problems with reserves and are running into problems with funding levels. We're reducing our funding levels. And, uh, I think this move to Wellmark could help us continue that path. So, that's kind of the long and the short of what I have. Uh, I think most of the things we're right on track for with, uh, being in compliance with the new law. You know, Woodbury County's always been very, uh, pro employee. So we've never had an issue with, uh, with the health plan being considered outside of the boundaries of, of what the law designed. So I think things are just moving forward very, very well.
The only negative thing going ahead is that, uh, you know, they moved out of the community.
Yes, sir.
We lost a hundred and six or five jobs, uh, because of that.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, the third thing is that we don't have, uh, direct communication with the people. We've gotta call them on the eight hundred number to receive some, uh, you know, receive my answers and services that we need here. So the local service no longer exists. That's the disappointing part about it.
It's extremely disappointing.
We've got a hundred and six jobs that we don't have in this community anymore.
Which is extremely disappointing. They were owned by Wellmark and...
So basically Wellmark is shutting them down?
Yes, yeah.
And then they're taking over that tax?
Yes, yes.
So nothing should really change?
As far as the county's concerned, it would be fairly seamless. You know, we'll make sure that there, you know, how these things are, there are always a lot of behind the scenes things. But we're gonna ensure that it's as seamless as possible. I, I think it's a regrettable decision on their part, but I don't know what influence I would have on it.
Do you believe they have office in Des Moines?
Yes, Des Moines, Des Moines and Sioux Falls. People from Sioux City, as I understand it, are being offered jobs in Des Moines and Sioux Falls. So they have a choice to go either direction. I think you'll see some of the people from here possibly commute to Sioux Falls, so, which is a long, long haul. Yes, especially in January and February and March.
And I guess time will tell if our service continues to where it has and evaluate as we go.
I think that's probably the best. They've guaranteed the admin pricing for two years. That gives us a time to make a solid evaluation and, uh, I think at the end of that time, we should take it out for bid definitely. If not, if not for January.
Is it, the reason they closed the city office, I don't know, this is for sure. But didn't, uh, Sioux City Schools, you know, um...
Sioux City Schools did pull out, but I don't think that that, there wasn't, as far as a portion of their business, that wasn't enough to, to harm them. I mean, you know, you'd never wanna lose a good account like that, but it, it was not enough to financially harm them. Where the, the, it was kind of a perfect storm, if you will. The ICD ten coding is a lot different than the ICD nine. Required substantial upgrades to their system, uh, very expensive, uh, maybe even a whole new system. Uh, they looked at possibly trying to put everybody on the same claims payment system as, uh, as Wellmark Blue Cross, which would have been very, very awkward, uh, to try to run the two systems separately, but the same system. Uh, they also, uh, they, there's just so much regulation, so much difference in the way that everybody feels business is gonna be done once, uh, this new law is fully implemented. Uh, you, you see Coventry purchased by Etna. You see a lot of the smaller, uh, carriers around the country purchased by larger carriers. They just, and everybody's a little bit afraid of, uh, how the guaranteed issue is gonna work, how that's gonna affect the marketplace. You know, someone's just fear of the unknown, to be honest. I, I don't know that they're right in their decision. I, I disagree with most of it, but, you, you know, there's a, anytime you have indecision, people make bad decisions, I think.
Certainly couldn't be political. Never mind.
Yeah, okay, I, I don't know. I mean, knowing the people that I know, I've known over the years at Wellmark, I would say it probably really wasn't political. It probably, yeah, I mean, you, I, I would say it probably wasn't. Uh, John Forsythe seemed to, to be much better, I, I would say, on a, on a relationship business, had a much stronger relationship with our, uh, Secretary of Agriculture than he does with our current governor. So, you know, that, that's it.
I, I don't see politics in it except that it's a business decision.
Yeah. I, I think it was, uh, it, I, you know, they were, and for the people I know there, I don't think that anybody had made this decision even as recently as the first of May. I think it's a decision that's just literally been made within the last few weeks. Yeah.
Something you considered for quite some time?
I think they were considering it for a long time. Uh, and it was, they were talking about the systems and how they were gonna upgrade the systems. Uh, they were talking about a, a lot of those pieces. And, uh, conversation kinda stopped, uh, mid-May and towards the end of May. So I, my guess is that's probably when the decision was made. But it, so, and I think it caught a lot of them by surprise, and I think it certainly caught everybody in the office here by surprise.
I don't like it, but obviously not in my pay grade to make those decisions, so I'll just try to live with it.
And do the best we can. Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Next item is a petition for a tax suspension for HG. Discussion? All those in favor? All those? Motion carries. Next item is approval of resolution banking and commending employee for years of service.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Regina.
Hello, everyone. Today I have before you a request for your permission to pursue bids on additional cameras for the LEC Center. I'm sure you might have questions. If you do, please let me know what those are. I would like you to discuss it with me if you have any concerns and so that we will know how to proceed or how you wish us to proceed.
Yeah. Currently, how many cameras do we have in that facility?
Okay, on, on the list that I've provided, we've got a current count on the jail level of 21 areas surveilled with 42 cameras in the jail area only. And then on the main level, we have 12 cameras with 10 areas surveilled.
So we have a total right now of 42 cameras?
Plus 12, so we're at 54.
Yeah, 54, 64 cameras. And this request is for, how many more?
We have five additional scopes that we're looking at. One is the booking area, the temporary holding in the booking area. The jail corridors are not surveilled at this current situation. Also, the day room area cameras are beyond five years old, and so the resolution would be ideally improved there. We've got the main lobby areas and the courtroom hallway areas that could use some additional surveillance. And also, there are some miscellaneous areas in the jail that aren't specifically disclosed here but aren't surveilled currently and could benefit from surveillance in that it could prevent liability issues.
So how many are you talking about totally with the new ones?
In the, in the main lobby courtroom area, we're talking about 12 additional cameras, 17 additional cameras in the jail hallways, 24 additional cameras in the temporary holding cells, 16 additional cameras in the day room areas, and seven in miscellaneous areas. So I don't have a tally on there and I...
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six, okay, thank you.
Plus 54.
Plus the existing 54.
That's a lot of cameras.
I guess that's my concern. I think that we need adequate surveillance and everything, but in a jail that size to have that many cameras is huge. I, I hope we're not overdoing it, placing those cameras in places that they should not be placed, violations of federal law, that kind of thing. So I'm a little bit concerned about that. I'm also concerned about, you know, the extreme, you know, number here with the size jail facility that we have. Who made this statement? Was it an architecture study or was it someone that came in professionally and looked at our jail based on the size of the facility and where these cameras might be necessary?
Sure, this was a collaboration of individuals. So not only was the sheriff involved in identifying areas that were under surveilled, but also too, we have a jail camera consultant who's on our current project. And they were able to identify areas of where we would place the cameras to get the most benefit for the camera in the area. So as a group, we've talked about it. So all the parties that have been involved previously have discussed this, and this was sort of the, where it came down to. This is what everybody agreed about so far.
I did have a question. In the initial, I mean, this is clarification, the initial jail project, that initial bid came under bid, correct?
Correct.
So were the cameras always in the initial bid or was that an add-on because it was extra money or because there really was a need? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, because it did jump considerably from when we started. So I'm just trying to figure out, because of need, security, because it was extra money, maybe it's a combination of all of it, you know, not sitting in on those meetings, you know, we're trying to keep track of doing things.
Right.
So you're just kinda looking for a progression?
Well, I'm looking for, was it always the jail consultant's recommendation to have this many cameras? Or did it just seem like a good idea because there was extra money? And then you start looking around and say, wow, actually we can now buy more cameras and it seems like a good idea? Or was it always?
Well, certainly then...
Always in range of the goal? Was that always the goal to have this many cameras?
No, that was not always the goal. But the need to have the cameras has been brought to light recently. As you're aware of, the litigations that have come up have brought this to the fore of the mind. And so we have been approached to look at the situation. Where can we improve the security and the safety of the jail? Where can we reduce the liabilities? And so, so it came out of a discussion that started after even the current project was bid. So it's relatively new information that was brought to light, and now we're trying to look at how can we best solve the situation and make it better.
Yeah, I think it's the idea that we'd rather be camera long than camera short. Past litigation has showed that the lack of cameras is what continues to be liability issues. And so it isn't, it isn't a wish list. It's a collaboration of understanding that we may have a certain size jail, but every area needs to be covered. We spoke with the state jail inspector. He's given us some guidance. And there's been numerous meetings. When I took over office, we decided to look at the cameras and we thought, well, hey, if we're gonna have this jail renovation, let's make sure that we have every area covered while we're doing it, instead of trying to piecemeal it after the fact. So I think to be ahead of it is, is the best way to be than to wish we had more when an attorney's standing here with a few more lawsuits. So I think we'd be money ahead now than paying next year because some, there wasn't some cameras in certain areas.
You can't videotape strip searches, though, can you? Is that legal to do the actual?
We're not, we're not.
We're not videotaping?
I mean, is there a search? Okay, I know where, no.
Here's, here's what I think is the whole rule. When I started 17 years ago, used to be able, my word was good enough, my reports was good enough. Now, in the day and age with the security and the cameras, YouTube, people taking their iPhones, taking videos, if they see the video, they think a lot different. So with these lawsuits that are coming up, people saying something that may not be true or could be true, with cameras, you can prove the fact that this did happen. This is why it happened. And then, for the safety of an inmate, we have to protect them, just, you know, they're human beings, you have to protect them. But if you can't see on a camera what happened to them and you're trying to take their word over another inmate's, that's the problem. So when you have video cameras, you can see what's going on. And for the safety of officers, you could see what happened to an officer, why he got hit. And we can use that as training video. So in litigation, that's, that's the biggest thing.
And, and technology, you know, the existing cameras we had are, become outdated and you need higher resolution and things such as that. So, you know, it's just, these are constants. These are things that are continually updated.
Well, I know we did need more cameras.
Right. It does seem like a...
I mean, I hate that, just, it's such a big job. I'm not saying that it's not needed by the state. You have to, no, you're not there. It looks like a big number.
Oh, I, I would agree, but I think my thoughts are past history in making sure that we have every nook and cranny covered and that we are making sure that we're doing everything so we don't have some of these past issues. I think that we're just money ahead on, on these things.
I, I've been involved in this for years, talking about security in the jail in the LEC install. And this evolved. What brought it to the front is a control panel that opened and closed doors within the jail. Totally shot. The wires, the covering on the wires was falling off, which immediately had to be attended to. So we do the CIP for 1.2. Nobody had a clue what that was gonna cost. It was an unknown. So the architect put it out there, we come up with a number. And the whole thing with the cameras evolved, I think, as well. It just became a point where if you don't have a camera on it, something's gonna go wrong. And that includes outside and first floor.
Right.
There's a lot of stuff that goes on in that building over there, and some of it's pretty heated. So we need to be able to control that with people having us visual. To say that we messed up 76 cameras, no, that, that really evolved. That really evolved.
And also too, this isn't in every, every single area. We're not putting cameras in unreasonable locations. We're looking at the high-risk areas. Where are the problems? Where have they been? Where are they likely to occur? So those are the areas where the cameras have been focused.
Well, that's what I'm concerned about. I mean, I don't wanna, I don't want to reduce it to the point where we still aren't effective in having the visualization of everyone in that, in that jail. Because you do have to protect, you know, the employees. We also have an obligation, as you say, you know, to the inmates that are there. And also, there are things that go on, you know, in those, in those cell areas and in recreation areas that has to be, should have some, a lot of visibility to it. I just don't want us to overdo it. 76 cameras, to me, seems a bit extreme, particularly in a jail our size. I could see if we had a facility that housed, you know, 300, 400 inmates on a annual basis for a jail our size that has a capacity of 223 or four at its maximum, seems, seems a little bit, seems a little bit high. So as long, you've convinced me, I think that as long as we can get through this thing within the costs that we're bothering money for, we should probably go ahead and do it.
Now, we do have, we're locked in at 1.2 minutes. From the moment Dave you realize.
Right.
We cannot, or we can't supplement that money.
Right.
So we're gonna have to wait and see when this comes back up.
So are we getting, is this to go out for bids now? Is that what we're giving the architect permission to do?
Yeah, that's my right of...
That's the next item.
Okay, I'd make a motion to, on the number of security cameras that they have in the LEC facility.
I'll sign it.
Discussion. Dave, you got anything?
No, I think she, we answered.
Why is there not an estimate cost?
That's what they have, they have, that's what this is.
Yep, I do, I do wanna let you know that I will be back next week to present to you the design fees for this work. So nothing will go forward until I have your approval and you feel comfortable with those numbers, okay? So I'll see you again next week.
To accept the number of cameras, that's eight.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
I move on the second item to have RLM put together an RFP.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both?
The issue here is, we're dragging this out further. We have a general contractor that's sitting on his thumbs, waiting for all this stuff to move along. That's not our fault. Had to be somebody in Alabama who did it. But this moves a little bit further forward, right?
Actually, that did come up in that meeting that I had a feeling for you and Larry. And I, it was my understanding that they would be able to continue on, that it shouldn't slow down a whole lot of your steel stuff that they can be doing. So it may not be as definite as, as what you're thinking, so.
Hallelujah.
Yeah, that's, that's the desire, is that we're going to continue, to encourage them to continue their work so that they will not be focused on this. We'll be preparing the information for bids while they're doing their work.
Two weeks ago, they were talking four weeks for design, and then we had to look at it, which would put another week to two weeks on top. So we were still looking at it in the late August, or they would be up on it. Yikes. And a couple weeks.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
John?
Good morning. My only agenda item this morning is a response to a minor subdivision application from Joyce Wingard. Joyce lives at 1907 County Home Road. She owns a 42-acre parcel, which she requests to split into two pieces in order she can market them independently. So she wants to carve out the homestead in two acres. Only issues that I might comment on are the fact that this is approximately 8/10 of a mile northwest of the town of Bronson. They would have the right of extraterritorial review. We anticipate they'll waive that. Additionally, it's on a county-maintained gravelled roadway, so we'll be asking for implementation of our county paving policies, requiring the cost-sharing agreement. Be happy to answer any questions. I'm asking you consider and refer this agenda item to the zoning commission for public hearing and recommendation.
Senator Lloyd.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good morning. First item we have on the agenda is to consider approval for permit to work within the right-of-way for the Uncle Ben Run. This is in Cushing. It's an annual event. They will be setting up barricades during the duration of the run, providing traffic control for people. Little bit closed for approximately three hours on a Saturday morning. I recommend approval.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion.
The Uncle Ben.
What date was that?
Sorry, I passed it along.
I know, I... Do you have the date?
Yes, we do.
I thought we had the date. Probably should've brought in the letter.
Only because I won't run it, but this is personal, so I, I'm checked out later.
Call me, I will let you know. If I recall correctly, it was in August, but I, I will double-check that for you, Jackie, and drop you an email if you...
Thank you.
Since you're interested in the run itself. Yeah, I thought it was on there, but I don't see it. So I will make sure I update that before we send them back the approved permit. Next item we have is consider approval for a utility permit for Mid-American Energy. They're working on County Roads D-38 and K-29, looking at natural gas distribution pipeline.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
Finally, we have a utility permit for long lines. This is in Kidron and Wolf Creek Townships on 210th Street. They're proposing fiber optic cable replowed and bored. One of the requirements I always put on it is that they push it either under or around all, all of our culverts out there. We don't have any bridge attachments in this stretch. I recommend approval.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Finally, last week, we took bids on trucks for the engineering department and District Five staff at Hornick. Had quite a few bids come in with a lot of different options. Apologize for it being late getting the recommendation and the bid tabs out to you. It took a little while to sort it out last week. I'm recommending for the first half-ton pickup for the engineering department that we purchase a Ram 1500 from Billion Motors of Sioux City. Purchase price $25,600, less $3,500 trade-in on our... trade-in on our old F-one-fifty, and net purchase price of twenty-two thousand, one hundred dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Secondly, we have a second engineering truck for the engineering department. This is another half-ton extended cab pickup. Again, a Ram fifteen-hundred from Billion Motors. Bid was twenty-five thousand, six hundred dollars, less an eighty-five hundred dollar trade for unit one oh two. Net purchase price to the county is seventeen thousand, one hundred dollars.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We took bids on a new pickup truck. This will be utilized by the foreman in Hornick. Three-quarter ton extended cab pickup. Recommend purchase of the Ram twenty-five hundred from Billion Motors of Sioux City for twenty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars, less a seven thousand dollar trade-in for unit number fifty-six. Final purchase price, nineteen thousand, nine hundred dollars.
On the agenda, we have the half-ton and the three-quarters.
Oh.
There was two half-tons.
There was two half-tons that we took bids for. I said pickup bids, oh, yeah. I guess I, we should, probably should have been a little more descriptive, Pat, but we did take bids for two pickup replacements last week.
Okay. So that was D, there were two under D?
Two under D, yes.
Okay, now under E.
Move B.
Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Finally, we took bids on a sport utility-style vehicle for the secondary road department. In analyzing the bids, we got two different size classes of vehicles. I created part of that confusion when you shop on the Internet and just try to look at the vehicles on the lot. There's a lot of overlap in sizes on these vehicles. We ended up with two different size classes of SUVs getting bid. The correct one, if you looked number by number and spec, was the Ford Explorer. That was bid by Barry. The low bid was actually for a size class under that, which was the Dodge Journey from Billion. I guess my recommendation in reviewing the specs is that we reject all bids and rebid the SUV to give everybody a fair shot. One way or another, we're, we're putting dealers at a disadvantage and not giving them a straight-up bid, so.
Motion to reject the question, the bid.
And to rebid.
And to rebid.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Billion had offered an option to buy a third quad cab pickup. Would be a little less costly vehicle. I didn't look at bidding any pickups for replacement for the SUV. When I priced them online, they were more expensive than the SUV class, but they did give us some excellent bids on that. They offered that as an alternative for the board, so.
Did you give the rest of the information on the bridge?
Pardon me?
Did you give everybody the information on the bridge that's closed?
No, I have not yet.
Why don't you go ahead and add?
We closed a bridge yesterday on two hundred and eightieth Street, east of Taylor Avenue. This is a bridge that's in the fiscal year twenty-fourteen program for replacement. It's what we call a greenwood structure. It's a timber structure with a flume. Controls the amount of fall that's in the stream there. It was originally built as a soil conservation structure. A number of years ago, I didn't dig back through the file to see what year that was, the green-span structure had a beam bridge erected over top of it on what's called a mud sill. Basically, they dig down into the dirt, they set a cap on the dirt, and then they span that with beams. The piling underneath the greenwood structure were in such poor condition, they couldn't bear a load any longer. We got a call yesterday that something looked like was wrong with our bridge. I went out and looked at it, and what has happened is the northwest corner of the mud sill has settled by over four inches. It's now laying on top of the greenwood structure underneath of it, on top of a piling that's badly split. It was not safe to leave the structure open in that condition. We, we were all but done with plans. We had gone out to a consultant design to replace this structure. Callan Burns and Associates was working on it for us. Those plans are ready. We should have a title sheet for the board's signature next week. We should be able to, to have a letting for the bridge in about three weeks after the board approves the plans, so. It's a lucky happenstance, plans are coming along so soon, but we do have an interim one to two months before the contractor moves in, that we won't be able to take advantage of the old bridge. It did buy us a lot of time, but this is why we had a replacement program, because I was very concerned about those mud sills and their ability to hold up the rest of that structure, so.
So are you taking something out of this year's to do this one?
No, this one was already budgeted for.
Oh.
It, it was part of our original five-year program. You know, we have the other four bridges for this year that are coming in on top of that. We'll begin letting them this winter as, as that money starts to come in from that extra one point three million dollar levy, so. Again, this was the original program. This doesn't impact any of the bridges that we already had voted to fund, so.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
PJ, you have the question?
No, not partially maybe, but will you just tell me what the question is?
There was a motion to make item E, a discussion and action motion. And it's on the agenda for discussion only.
Looking at it and looking at past history of how the board has acted on these agendas, I would caution you that the only thing the board should do today is discuss it, because that's the parameters that the board has set for us, so. That's what the agenda is all about, to tell the public what you're going to do, and since that's all you've told the public you're going to do, I believe that's all you should do.
So no action?
Not the way you worded this.
I'd make a motion to make this an action item for next week.
Mark.
Just a minute. Can we?
I'm going to be on there anyway.
Right. I want to make sure it's on there.
Mark, I don't know what's your problem.
Larry, the question I have here is, there was a motion made previously earlier in the meeting, that this become an action item, it passed. Now, that motion, I think, needs to be reset.
I have to check with that and see if that's.
You can, you don't have to necessarily, you can say, I just would be returning their children to proceed with that, if that's okay with the majority of the board. Because right now, you have advice, you have a motion that we, you have advice from your attorney. It's up to the board to determine whether they want to proceed at this point.
I'd like to take the advice of our attorney.
I'd like to proceed.
So you can make a motion to change the agenda again at this point.
So I would take the advice of our attorney and delete that action item and just do the discussion, I would, whatever I can say, good.
I don't know if I can second it, because I voted negatively against the motion to start with.
This is a new motion.
This is a new motion.
New motion?
Just a, to put that discussion item aside.
I'll second your motion, if I could legally do that.
Discussion.
I think we need to get this action. I think we need to get it taken care of. We've discussed this for two, three weeks. Why are we, why are we not taking action on this today?
There is more information down in there.
But I thought we were just going to figure out a number today. Give them a number that they can go with.
No, it's.
What did we talk about last week, then? Nothing?
I think it did, there is a question on the floor, second, so I think it's.
But you should have asked for my opinion. So my, my point is, we just keep discussing. We don't, we're not taking any action on anything.
Well, until you have all the information, I don't know that you can make an intelligent decision.
But the information that we'll be getting later, that has nothing to do with setting a number.
You don't know that for sure, David.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not confident.
How do we know?
There is, there is information that loose ends that needs to be tied up here. There are things that's been done in the past that, that may not be what we need to do now for the future. And those answers can be provided in the future. We need the additional answers, I think.
The answers you're looking for from wage an hour, I think are irrelevant. We have reserves all over the state. We have cities that have reserves. They're functioning, they're happening. We have had thirty years of experience. They've been carrying guns for thirty years. We've had the liability for thirty years. They've been using our equipment for thirty years. It just, it just doesn't seem that there's any information out there that's going to undo the entire state.
Well, we're not trying to do the, the entire state. I disagree with you.
Just here.
Just here. I disagree with you. I, I. What I bring up a point, there is, what's that?
I bring up a point, and I'm speaking as president. The way you have this on the agenda, you're potentially violating open meeting rules if you switch this to a vote and action item from discussion, with the notice that you provided, obviously, all the Sioux City media is here, but for anyone that might have wanted to come down and speak, if this, if, you know, if they knew what would have been an action item and they're not here behind, you're potentially violating open meeting rules by switching this from discussion to action item.
That's why I'm thinking to take our attorney's opinion.
Isn't that what the motion is?
Yes.
Right, that's what we're discussing. Any more? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Now, I have a motion on the floor. Great.
That's what I was concerned about, is that you did make a motion, and it was on the floor, and it was actually, probably what was, was to amend your motion, but it wouldn't have prompted.
So do we, can we go ahead with the motion?
You can, you can, it would be easier if you just re-offered your motion at this time.
Re-offer. Okay, I make a motion to put this item on as an action item next week.
Fair.
Discussion.
I'm going to vote against it, because, not for the fact that there may be some other developing issues that we discussed earlier, just moments ago, that would prevent it from becoming an agenda item for a decision. I think that it has to remain open. I don't have a problem with putting things on the agenda, but we have to have the latitude to make decisions that are solid for the community as a whole. As I said, there are issues that we have to have answered. As far as I'm concerned, concerned about liability issues, I'm talking about insurance issues, and some concerned about a number of different issues here, so I'm not going to vote to restrict the chairman to make mandate, you know, to put an item on the agenda.
I don't think, I don't think we're mandating it.
You are with the, with the motion. Take it back.
But, but, we've been talking about this for weeks. We keep bringing up that we need questions answered. Well, how many times are we going to go to JD for questions? How many times are we going to back over to Sheriff? This has been going on for thirty years, fellas. You guys have had a reserve program for that long, and now all of a sudden, we have a big issue with it.
Let's not.
You've got one question you need answered, that should be answered today.
What is that?
From wage an.
From wage an hour.
Hour. And then I hope we can move on with this. This issue's getting a little.
I agree. I'm not in the way of rushing to you.
It's not a rush.
Other than Mr. Gird is standing there.
Sure.
The reason I was changing to an action item is I had talked to him at his office, and he said that was fine. To make discussion only. Then about five-something Thursday night or Friday night, I got another email that said that they wanted it for action as well. By that time, I decided to leave it the way it was and take action.
I have a procedural question.
Go right ahead.
It's that, what this discussion is all about is who has the ability to put an item on the agenda, and that means, I think you probably need to remind PJ about that, but there isn't, as far as anything I know, is who can put something on the agenda, and I think it goes back to past practice. It's the board chairperson, and the research and reading that I've done is that, it's not written, certainly a resident law that says that the chairperson is the only person who can put something on the agenda.
Do you have an opinion?
It's not an issue that I've ever looked at. The only thing I will say, I will, I guess I will say two things. I can look at that if that's the board wants me to look at that particular issue, because we've never specifically addressed that. I will say, however, that even if the board chooses to put an item for action on the agenda, it doesn't mean you have to act on that item. So I'll throw that out there.
Which is fair.
Yeah, but it does bring it up for a vote, whether you're going to act on it.
And past practice has always been the chairman sets the agenda. I don't know that we've ever mitigated from that, and so I take it from what you're trying to do.
Mr. Chairman?
Wait, wait, wait.
The discussion.
You want me to tell that case, PJ?
Not while the board is discussing it, and you speak as soon as we're done discussing it up here.
Other counties have the audit to do the agenda. Well, I, saying that the chairman has total control over the agenda, I think is absurd.
Well, we're not saying that.
But that is past practice. Mark, when you're chairman, did anybody debate from yours?
People put things on the agenda.
They ran through you.
Sure. And I want this on the agenda, and it doesn't seem to get there.
Not a problem.
We got a motion on the floor.
Here, Mr. Speaker.
Now.
Thank you. I believe last week, you directed the sheriff, sending you all the information.
State here, please.
My name is Jim Marshall. I'm with the Department of Public Labor and Customs. And I believe last week, you instructed the sheriff to send you all the information to Tuvie to make a decision. And I believe that he has sent that information to you, all that he has. He's addressed every concern that you brought up and offered solutions to that. What is your problem? Why can't you move on? Is this a personal issue? Is it a political issue? Act. That's what the taxpayers of this county elected you to do. Make decisions and move.
And we will. I mean, all this question.
Yeah, well, we are.
Well, you, that is not a specific. And until we have all the information to make a legitimate decision.
You should have.
Then we can make a good decision, Mr. Marshall.
You should have, George.
Well, we should have, but we also have other information that comes to us from state, federal, whoever, so that we can make a legitimate, good decision for this county. And it doesn't matter, to a certain extent, what other counties are doing across the state. They may be doing it wrong. They may be doing it wrong. I mean, we have a plethora of information that comes into us, and we've got to sort through that and make a decision that is best for this county as a whole. Now, it does take time.
I don't know, I just perceive that you're dragging your feet, not making the decision.
That's your.
That's how I see it, and I think that's how most of the public sees it.
Well, we're not dragging our feet. I mean, we, absolutely.
I firmly believe you are.
It's just your perspective. I'd love to. Vote on motion. Back to motion.
The motion is to put this on the agenda for next week as an action item.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Sheriff?
Good morning.
First man I want to say, I want to thank you for all the information you provided. I'd like to thank JD and Dennis Butler for all that they've done regarding this issue. We've got one more step to go that nobody seems to want to live with, and that is wage an hour. And that will be done, you know, you're going to be back in use about eleven, eleven thirty this morning. We'll have two supervisors there, the auditor will be there, give you resources. And that will be done, you know, you're gonna be back in use about eleven, eleven thirty this morning. We'll have two supervisors there, the auditor will be there, give you resources, and there will be phone call with wage an hour, and then we spell out exactly, you know, what's possible, what's not.
Great. Uh, I wanna clarify that. Two things, if I may. One, I'm taking a vacation next week. I'm gonna enjoy my daughter at the state softball tournament and travel back and forth from Wisconsin on vacation, so I'm putting out some miles. So we didn't think she'd make it to the state softball tournament. Don't underestimate the Lady Eagles. Number two, wage an hour has nothing to do with reserves. That was an issue of correctional officers. I believe Mr. Stabile weighed, uh, gave his opinion. I believe Josh from the county attorney's office, he wasn't sure, but in his end, he said basically wage an hour probably carries the day.
Right.
And so there's, there's no reason to discuss it.
Do what's reserved.
No, 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 no. And that's why I'm gonna help you out. What it has to do, well, let me just explain to you, because I, I think you misunderstand it. Larry, here's the deal. Let me speak, and let me get my time. It was with correctional officers being used as reserves, and they said that it was a like job. I disagree, but I respect their opinion, and they, as Josh said, probably carry the weight at the end of the day. I don't need to discuss it with them. I trust Mr. Stabile's expertise. And first of all, I never got notice of that till nine fifteen this morning. So I had no time to prepare. I got an email from J.D. this morning at nine fifteen.
That was a confirmation email.
Oh, the email that I had was the, uh, only email I received was the meeting was canceled that one week, and then today it popped up that there was a meeting at eleven thirty. It doesn't matter. Mr. Stabile already weighed in that he thinks that the correctional officer job and the deputy sheriff job are alike in, uh, services. So he's the expert. We checked with Josh from the county attorney's office, and he wasn't sure, but in the end, he did say, hey, I believe that wage an hour carries the day. I don't think there's any reason to discuss it anymore, because first of all, I don't have any other arguments, except I believe it was in two thousand and six, uh, the county legal person from Class Law Firm ruled that there was no similarities, that they could do it. You know, I'm not gonna bring it up. I don't think Mr. Stabile's gonna change his mind. We kind of, past sheriffs hung their hat on that ruling. He's changed it, so unless we got an attorney general's opinion, I don't see why we're gonna go forward. Yes, other counties do use correctional officers to be reserves. Um, so why we're not, or, I, I don't know, I'm not gonna get involved in it. The issue today is the reserves here that have other employment that wanna be reserve deputies, and alls I'm asking is for that number to grow, so that what we could have is a manageable number of reserves to serve the county. Thirty-plus years, we've had it. Nothing's changed. Nothing's changed. Uh, it isn't a nuance. It's been around. The question I have for you, Chairman Clausen, is I, I received this, um, two-page letter from you, and what I wanted to know is, are these your questions, or are these the board's questions?
Those are mine.
Those are yours, okay. Nobody else from the board wanted to send me any. I, in return, responded to your questions. Did you all get them?
Right.
Everybody got them? Okay. They were emailed, uh, Saturday.
The board all got it, yeah.
Okay. What I wanted to address, though, what's, you know, obviously you don't like how I proceed, and that's, that's your opinion, just as we all have different opinions. But I think what we've gotta do is we have to get through those, uh, issues and do what's best for Woodbury County and what has stood the test of time of thirty-some years of using the reserve deputies to supplement our agency, to help the county. I would point out that the county has hired part-time employees for the auditor's office, secondary roads, emergency services, and conservation. And I'm just offering this, ours is free. Ours is one dollar, and they're, they are giving of their time to help provide public safety in traffic control and in summer festivals such as Saturday in the Park, Anthem Celebration, Bronson Celebration. We had a celebration in Pearson. Um, we had a heart walk in Sioux City. Uh, when Vegas has a big weekend festivity, they've used the reserve for years, and we always have provided our reserve deputies. They also help out with goodwill on their shoe drive and their mitten drive. These take away from our personnel being out there. Instead, we're using the reserves to help offset costs. Mr. Van Bruggen's group, uh, Tax Research Conference agreed that this is a cost-saving measure. This is a way to, um, not rise, raise the level of overtime or continue to ask for ma, more manpower. It's to supplement, not supplant. These gentlemen, men and women, have also gone on prisoner transportations. When we take one of them, it's free. The reason I asked for thirty was long-term, not today. I didn't wanna discuss fifteen dollars an hour. That's, before I would ever get to that, as you've seen, my record here is I come to you before I do anything, much to surmise of some, but I believe to bring it forward. Before we ever would ask for fifteen dollars an hour, we would bring it here and present it. These men and women are willing to do it for nothing, and they have for years. What we said, ninety-seven out of ninety-nine counties have reserves. Out of that, a number of them do pay their reserves. Those are possibilities to look into, but those weren't something that we were going to look into tomorrow or a year from now. We were a long ways off. Strategic planning is looking ahead and trying to set, uh, a direction in which way you wanna go. But we have individuals here that on Saturday in the park, because we only have six reserves, we didn't have enough to fill, to help, so they had vacate, some were planning summer vacation. That's why I didn't arbitrarily pick a number of thirty. I picked a number of thirty to realize that these men and women who are dedicated and wanna volunteer their time do have other things in their lives with their jobs, their family commitments, and we don't wanna get in trouble with either, and yet we like some time from them. And that's all. Somehow this has spun out of control to the point that, um, we've had all these wild allegations that we digress to deputies at Pulaski Park and all these other things. That has nothing to do with reserves. When I talked about the reserves, I talked about the importance of using them to help us, to, to serve a vital role. They've helped Sioux City Police Department on a number of occasions in their events and activities. And to, to see this program go away for maybe some indifferences towards me, maybe I, maybe that's just wrong for me to think that, but I think I noticed some disdain directed towards me, especially in the letter you wrote, Mr. Clausen. I, I was somewhat taken back, and I can tell you this, I can tell you this. I was glad I wrote this before I read that, because I think cooler heads prevail.
Could I say something?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I don't think there's been anyone on this board, I really don't, I have not heard anyone on this board that has said that they are against volunteers or the sheriff's reserves in, in the community. You're right. It's always been positive.
Right.
And it always will be a positive, depending how it's run. And volunteers are a necessary component to our community as a whole, not only in the sheriff's department, but in every department and governmental body that we, we have if we're gonna have a good quality, uh, community in our, in our society. Never been that. What we're concerned about, I'm concerned about, the environment has changed over the last fifty, sixty years when it comes to people volunteering and the kind of, uh, things that can happen to those individuals, uh, when they go out there serving the public. We can be sued for everything and anything. Uh, technology has changed that because of cell phones and everything else. We talk about cameras today in, in the jail, and that's, and that's fine and good, and we should have those things. But I don't wanna put, and we don't wanna put, our public in a situation where, uh, it's gonna increase our liability so high, because we have to protect these folks. They're coming to us, and they're volunteering, and they're, and it's, and it's all good and well, but they shouldn't be doing this. But if they're put in a situation where they're damaged or, or something happens, we have to, we have to support them, and we have to protect them. We have to provide them medical coverage, uh, which that is fine, but that can be very, very expensive anymore. Fifty, sixty years ago, we didn't have to really concern ourselves with that. Uh, the liability insurance is gonna, will go up because we have the volunteers, the kind of risk that we put them in. That's the kind of things that we're concerned about. It's not against the reserves or the, or the, uh, uh, reservists or, or the volunteerism that they're gonna put and provide for this company. That's been good. That's been good. We're not against that at all. But as I said, there are other components that we have to, and you brought up another issue, the, uh, the pay situation. Now, you said, down the road and planning, when does a volunteer become a employee of the county? If we're gonna pay or give them a stipends, if you will, I'll use that term, of twenty-five dollars, uh, an hour or whatever, if they go over nine or ten to fifteen hours a, a week and, and they volunteerism for the community, when does that individual become an employee of the county? What happens when we start giving that individual a stipend and it amounts to five, six thousand dollars a year? And do we basically have to start picking up, uh, the full health insurance policy for that, for those individuals? The wage hour laws have changed from, uh, a part-time employee being twenty hours, it's gone up to thirty hours now. Those are the kind of questions I need to have answered for the, for the gentleman.
Right, and I, and I'm glad, because that's what we want.
It's not that we're, we're against the volunteerism.
Right.
Or the reserves. It's not that at all. I haven't heard anybody on this board that has stated that, that fact, that we're doing this to, to whittle down or to minimize the, uh, minimize program, 'cause it has been a good program.
Yes, it has. It has. And to answer that question, it's the same, you, you are, as a board, the ones who decide that. You've decided that already. You've decided it with conservation, how you pay them and how you do those, uh, with those, uh, part-time.
And the fully.
Right, yeah. Exactly. So you, it would be the same way. But like I said, we are so far down the road that that's kind of a smoke and mirror. We're not, we're not talking about that. We're, we're talking about just having reserves and a number, to come up with a number that we, uh, believe that is best manageable for, uh, the, the men and women who serve the sheriff's office. So that, you know, really, that is what it's about. And, you know, this, this program, like I said, it's, it's a tremendous program. We've, have a tremendous group of volunteers, many of them here today, that have, uh, different jobs, different backgrounds, some are still going to school. I love the mix. We have thirty-some in the wait to try to do it. Pilot, um, we have all kinds of different people that are very interested in, uh, doing this.
I did have.
Yes.
I did have a couple of questions, but go ahead, Larry.
Okay. There's, George said, there's no one here against reserve program. It came from your office about paying them, not this board. That's one of the things that wage hour is gonna define for us, because we cannot afford to take on thirty more employees, uh, whether they're part-time or whatever they are. We don't know what our liability is for these people, and who came up with the fifteen-dollar figure? I've heard fifteen, twenty, thirty, these numbers all came from your office.
Right.
Didn't come from us. And your response, you wondered, no, who came up with that? Your office, not us.
No, what we were talking was a general dialogue of what other counties do. We didn't say we were doing it. Other counties, see, and that's why, that's why this is a good meeting, because if I tell Dennis and it.
It's not a good meeting if there's animosity.
I, I guess I don't have any.
None for you.
This does, but I don't have any.
Dave, that was the response to what you wrote.
What, and what.
You started to public press.
What I, what I, what I did was, I sent a letter, uh, the following day to the media when you said I didn't give you that information. I had given it to you.
The whole world payroll?
Oh, I don't know how they get it. That's AP wire. I could, I don't send it to.
Came from your office.
Well, it comes from AP. They probably get it out. I have no idea. I don't worry about that. I sent it to local media and they share it. I, I have, listen, I don't, I don't need all that press. What I'm, what I'm here to talk about is, is the reserves. I didn't, listen, I didn't say.
That's what I like to talk about.
I didn't say anything to anybody that we wanted, uh, starting in December. What I said was, other sheriff's offices do these types of things. Somehow that became sheriff Drew is gonna start paying reserves fifteen dollars an hour. I gave you examples. After sixteen hours, Des Moines Police Department pays reserves. They keep the number of reserves up so that they really don't have to pay them, because it's hard to get above those hours. I was giving you examples. I didn't say that.
But they, are they, are they volunteers?
Yes, they're, they're, they're reserved.
Two different distinct things, and reservists as a person, I can understand getting paid. I can understand, but a volunteer, a volunteer gets no pay.
Well, well, and, and that's probably where some of the confusion lies, is, you know, I'm not sure, George, but I know this, that for whatever reason and however they decided to do it, um, different agencies, police and sheriffs, after a set amount of hours, then they pay them. You know, it's probably no different than what we're doing right now with our, with the part-time with county conservation.
That's really confusing to me.
Yeah, I mean, I.
That's what I understand.
But I'm not, that's not what we're asking. I was just giving you examples, and I think what happened was, you may have ran with that. Maybe my fault for not explaining it very good. But alls I'm after is the men and women here to continue to do what we've done for all the years. None of them have ever been paid, and none of them that I've talked to expect to be paid.
No, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't think so.
No.
But when you brought up the fact that, with the statement, that there is a potential of paying, uh, volunteers, that's what, that's what, that's what really bothered me.
Yeah, it is, right.
I don't, I don't understand that, and I don't know how you could, you could do both at the same time.
I, I'm not sure. I mean, I could research it more, um, but it's not our intent. It's not any of our intent to pay these guys. So I didn't wanna get caught up in that stream. I think we're going down a whole different area.
But you've gotta understand, we are not against, you know, the reservists, volunteers, Sheriff. We really, I think, they're a good organization, they've performed well in the past, uh, and we've seen them in the community, the whole community has seen that. We just wanna do it the right way now, as I said. Uh, environment's changed over the last fifty, sixty years. County is sued for everything, very sensitive to that, and, and, uh, we have suits that we've lost, we've got reserves in our insurance that we have to keep built up. If we don't keep that built up and keep those monies in reserve, then, and lose cases, we're gonna have to borrow money to pay the suits.
Right.
So I don't want to, I don't wanna have to go there with that.
The good news, the good news is, the reserves haven't cost us anything.
No, they haven't.
They have not.
Cross my fingers, nothing would, they never will.
Because they're always supervised by, by a deputy. They're, they're, they're always with us, and that, that's, uh, that's really the best.
Sheriff, I thought you brought that up, because really that, mine was more the deputy going forward.
Right.
Will the reservists be riding along with deputies?
Right.
Or will they, so they won't be in their cost?
No, they ride with us.
Okay.
They, they are riding with us.
Okay.
All, right.
It's a supervision thing, I know, it's gray area throughout the state.
Yes.
That's where I think we can get it trucked.
No, they do drive their patrol car to the, uh, event. They do, but that's, they gotta get there somehow.
So are they, are they going to be doing, I know I asked you this last, with patrol, are they gonna patrol?
No, they're.
Definitely would. We're not really using somebody.
No, they're just riding with a deputy on patrol, right.
So they'll all be keeping regular hours, they'll be more on call like they have it in the.
For events that we use, or for times that they, you know, we have, we might be running short deputies on patrol, and they hop in with somebody, that support role. Yeah.
Just on a.
So I, I gave that to you as an option down the road. And before we ever got to that place, those would be things that we would talk about. But that's, that's so far away. When you're talking six guys, if you went to thirty, you'd be talking a couple of years before you got to that because I wouldn't be comfortable. I wouldn't put the county in that. I'd wanna make sure that they had all the adequate training that they had before they ever got to that point. Because I, like you, don't wanna get sued and I don't want that liability either.
I think this dialogue is really good this morning because we really never got down to the.
Yeah, I, you know, I think so.
That's why I think it's just a litigating.
Yeah, litigating of, and, and the devil's in the details and.
Right.
Explaining it now, Sheriff, and I do appreciate that.
Well, I apologize for pa- I mean, I think honestly, somewhere along the line, and I, I'm not gonna say who or how many back we go, but somehow I believe you guys were left out in the cold. I really do.
I think the question, uh, this, this afternoon or whatever conference call takes place about wage an hour is really important to me. I've gotta know, when does that reservist become an employee as a body or when, when they're listed as volunteer?
And I think.
And what accountability does the county have when that, when that occurs? I mean, that's a really important question.
Right. You know, and I talked to different sheriffs and, like I said, some pay them, some don't. And when they did pay them.
I don't think those other sheriffs are right. I mean, they could be out there doing the wrong thing.
I, I, I would think, I would think that they would seek legal counsel before they did it.
Doing the wrong thing in this county.
I'm pretty confident, but I, I, uh, I think that they would, but I, I'm, that's not even where I'm interested in going. I mean.
It's been a good dialogue.
Thank you. I, uh, I don't probably need to be here next Tuesday. You guys can go. You've heard me long enough. Probably don't wanna see. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be on vacation. You can, you can move it to another time because I'm not giving up my time.
Oh, you're gonna be on vacation.
Yeah, I'm going.
I might be over center finding this, but to me, the question was, you have reserves. You got six of them. You wanna add more.
Right.
Nothing changes.
Nothing's changed.
I thought the question was, would we pay for the physicals?
Well, that is one of.
How we got so far around.
But I do think that is one of the questions.
Right.
That's a process of order too.
Because, you know, one always leads to another.
I, I think Larry has been working with J.D. on reducing the price. I haven't heard the price, but I think it's come down. Right. So that's, that's, uh, good news and, and how other sheriffs have done that. I've answered that. Some, um, pay for it out of the reserve funds.
How many physicals can you afford to pay?
Out of the reserve fund? It depended on the price.
If it's, let's say it's two hundred dollars, how many can you afford?
You're working on my math, but I think, I think I, we do have that amount of money. If, that, and that would come out of the reserve fund that we have through people's donations and things like that. We could do it that way. Um, or however you guys pay for physicals for your employees or what, because they are paid a dollar.
They are.
Well, they're considered. But they're under the, there's that one dollar deal that covers under the work comp.
The information Sheriff, that you've given us through your staff is that it's across the board.
Right.
Uh, most of these, uh, reservists have, and other counties, uh, are self-sustaining.
Yes.
A lot of the funds that they raise in, in, in.
Yeah, and we can do that. I mean, we've come up with different ideas.
I think that we've got a, a good price on the physicals that, uh, I think can be acceptable by everyone.
That'd be tremendous. Cause the, the whole thing is you don't wanna, you know, kick them with four hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Uh, we do have, I think I maybe put in that memo roughly nine or ten thousand dollars in past donations for the reserves. So we, more than cover. It would deplete our account, but, you know, we will receive money from different events also and forward all those checks to the auditor. So, um, you know, the question really is, please give me a number that I can, uh, so these men and women can spend time with their, at their work and their family and, and not be burdened with additional hours or that we're shorthanded. Because the public really has, um, come to the sheriff's office often because of the past years that they've done. Saturday in the park will call us, all these different heart walks. They know, hey, can the sheriff's reserves come down? So you're right, George. They're a tremendous asset and.
What is your maximum number, sir? What's your minimum?
Oh, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna give you such a bad, I would say, uh, I'd hate to go less than twenty-five. I really would. I know that is, it's really close, but, uh, I would hate to go less than that. I think Johnson County has a twenty-five. Pot County has fifty-five. You can see that they use them. And the reason they do is, uh, they're not burning them out.
You know, I do, I'm just gonna, I have some concerns about being able to supervise and bringing on so many at one time. Would you ever be, um, open to starting and, and building it up a little more slowly than rather all at once? I mean, I just think any program is more successful if you can not start at its top.
Right.
But, you know, maybe this year this many, next year that many. And then you've got the guys that have been there a year. They can kind of venture the ones that, the new ones that come in. It just seems to build in some safeguards. Uh, when I look at liability, the more mentoring you have, the more coaching you have, the slower we go, the less the liability, uh, for our taxpayers and, um.
Yeah, you know, uh, I, I'm not opposed to that. Um.
It, it seems to settle minors a little bit.
If you being a teacher, past practice teacher, how would you like it to see, you have a class of twenty-five and say, now I don't know what fifteen of you because I wanna make sure you all get.
Dave, I can address that because.
I know you can.
I worked in, let me, I'll answer right now so I know what the question is. I worked in field and we always said we were understaffed. A speech ecologist for thirty-four years. We were always understaffed. And we did hire their professionals that would go out and they would alleviate some of our case problems. Well, the problem was, without proper supervision, you had people out doing work that I would say had the potential of not being up to par, of not being the same quality. So they were a great asset. And it did depend on, you know, if you, you gotta, what we always said, you know, an experienced, um, helper as opposed to the new one. The new ones, they just, they weren't there long enough. They couldn't begin to have the expertise or the judgment or be able to gain their, their feet that you gave them through experience. So starting off slow and, and building up is what worked for us and I, and.
And that's what the reserve program will be because they have, they have a long class that they have to, they have to go through. And it, we get documentation all the time on what it's gonna be to be a reserve.
Right.
It's not like you're just gonna throw them out there.
They supervise me.
Let me bring this kind of to a halt here. Are there any more questions on the program because we've got a conference call? Dave's got the conference call. The arms are jacking.
I really don't need the conference call, unless you do.
I understand. I wanna comment.
You have to participate. You should participate. We sent some of your guys to, uh, because what we're getting back in wage an hour. They're questioning what you're doing.
Yes, Sheriff, the only thing I, I, like I said, uh, would be the, the, the difference between reservists and a, and a volunteer. If we pay that volunteer, what responsibility does that company have when we go with that?
I think the same that you do with, you have a.
And, and this guy on the phone, I don't know who it is. I know, I mean, I don't, but he's got, he's, cause he's a wage an hour fellow for the state. He needs to answer that for this county.
Right. Um, and that's fine, George. We can do that. Uh, Jack, just so you understand, um, before they ever get on, maybe be on their own per se, but still supervised, they would ride along like a deputy, field training deputy. So they go through the same process. And lastly, a number of reserves have become correctional officers and then become deputies. So it's a tremendous program.
And it's a stepping stone.
Right. Because you think about it, if I, application of, uh, Joe Smith that I don't know and it's, uh, John here that I've had the privilege of working with, well, guy goes the runner. I've seen this guy here.
One of my kids took in church.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But you, you're the ultimate authority on the number of people that, uh, as loud as reserve. My, my request is a minimum twenty-five and a maximum thirty. And, uh, I think we're all in agreement. It's a great program and we just need to proceed. Thanks.
Some of us wanna speak. I, I think there's a misconception. Everybody keeps throwing around, worried about us. Just, you know, we have, before we can do anything, we have six months of classes a minimum. Yes, sir. Jeremy Muller. Sorry. We have to ride along hundred, hundred and fifty hours. I mean, it's taken more time to get my certification from the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy than it did to get my instrument rating as a pilot. So I think that maybe is a misunderstanding. You think there's just, we're gonna go out there. No, it's, it was a long time coming before I got to even see the instead of a patrol car. You know, so we work long hour study, take tests and we're certified through the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy. So.
Well, thank you for wanting to.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Pickering. I've been with the unit for a year and a half. You know, we've got so much time that we spend with these individual deputies on training, bimonthly. You know, we're doing everything that the deputies are doing. The only difference is we're trying to give back to our community. We've got a whole bunch of people that still want to be able to give that opportunity. And it seems like you guys are just constantly, every week, wait, wait, wait. Some of us have been waiting a year and a half. We need an answer so we can continue to provide these services to our community. You're worried about pay. I work Saturday in the park. I put in ten hours alongside Lieutenant Winger, Major Stallman, and I made not a dime. The best pay I had was the hundreds of people that walked by the intersection that I was working and gave me a heartfelt thank you for what you're doing and giving your time. So we need to get past the politics, the arguing, the bickering, move forward and let us provide these services to the community. We're not just the average Joe going out there with a gun. We have so much more that we have to do before we even get the opportunity to look at that option. Thank you.
General officer, here? We're adjourned.